It is about 8:14, 8:15. We're in room 1010. Mr. CLA, what is our first item?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Rafael Prieto with the CLA's office. You have a seven-item agenda. Item number one is a DWP report, City Attorney Ordinance, CAO, report relative to amending the electric rate ordinance to modify temperature zones for Studio City. We have staff in the CAO's office and the Department of Water and Power.
All right, let's hit it.
Good morning. Robert Roth, CAO's office. The report before you recommends approval of the proposed resolution that amends Electric Rate Ordinance 180127. It corrects an error by authorizing a temperature zone change for Studio City zip codes 91602 and 91604, changing them from Zone 1 to Zone 2. The proposed action will have minimal impact on DWP revenue and will have no impact on the city's general fund. The department can speak about the details.
Okay, and then speaking about the details, tell me about the residential customers and the benefits that they would see in their energy use and charges.
Okay. Um... They... We try to encourage people use less energy in the... so that can... they can stay in the Tier 1 customers. So with this change, we'll enforce that price signal that... for people that can conserve and in that specific area that will serve... save energy, stay within the Tier 1 or, you know, less usage on the Tier 2.
And then can you just give me a synopsis on how the study was conducted and how the consultant narrowed his or her findings so specifically that they could confirm that just these two Studio City zip codes belong in this zone?
Okay. Um, for the study that we don't have all the weather station in every, you know, zip codes and cities, so they have to rely on the data, you know, close to those areas. So after the pressure raised, then the consultant we hired and then went back looking at data and then made a minor adjustment, then we see this little, you know, difference in these two zip codes that triggered us to move it into the Zone 2.
Okay. Um, let me get the cards up. Why don't you two excuse yourselves for a second and I'll call up all the public speakers, and I think we can get this done. Uh, let's see. Dr. Williams, Barry Johnson. Is Barry Johnson here? Come on up. And Lisa Sarkin. Is Lisa here? Okay, come on up. Okay, Dr. Williams, you're first, then Barry is second, and Lisa is third. Okay.
Good morning. Early morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Cerrano, Northeast LA. Thank you for having the 245 exercised against various parts of the DWP.
Okay, talking about number one. Dr. Williams, this is number one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this wasn't 245.
Studio City, temperature.
But thank you anyway for those, the other ones. One of the elements here is why do we need a separate rate for the valley? I know various elements of the valley. Why not also for other areas? Because here's one of the things. Temperature is not the only thing that determines the HVAC loads. It also goes to humidity and wind speeds. So in point of fact, this should include a BTU value rather than a just straight temperature value. So if it doesn't work on the BTU values, then it's a... becomes virtually an arbitrary system. That is, those areas where you may have a very high humidity and 85 degrees may actually have a greater HVAC load than those areas of higher temperature. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barry?
Barry Johnson, 4166 Farmdale, Studio City, here for the Studio City Residents Association. Your DWP bill is like looking at hieroglyphics, and we don't even know when this change... this erroneous change occurred, and we don't know if it's been changed back even now. And we're concerned that all these months and/or years, we've been paying in the wrong zone, and nothing in anything I've seen has addressed a refund to the customers who were erroneously placed in this zone and paying too much. Yeah, it's fine to get us back to where we should be, but also needing to be addressed is the overpayment that everyone has been paying all this time. So it would be nice to know if we can expect a refund anytime soon as well. Thank you.
All right, I'll... if you would like to get in touch with Mr. Cottolano there on the end, I'll ask him to find someone in DWP to indicate whether there is some kind of an appeal process, but this action that I believe will be taken today, I'm gonna go ahead and vote for the staff recommendation to make this adjustment, would establish the change on the record as to whether or not there is any rights to appeal and how that would go. I don't know, but we can ask. Okay, Ms. Sarkin?
Good morning, and thank you for finally getting this out here. I mean, it's been a year almost since I think it was determined that this rate should be changed. And I just want to bring you up to date on why we feel that... why this possibly takes so long. We had... we're told by the DWP for more than three years that which zone you own, we don't know whatever. The motion was brought, and I think it was erroneously put into this 073249 S1 instead of having its own council file, the motion from Councilmember Gruel. We were told for the past year and a half that no report had been done, even though it was done finally in July. It was approved by staff, and look at how long this has taken. We certainly hope that you send this to the council, and we would like it to be immediately done.
Going to the council right away.
Okay.
So, Mr. CLA, how long will it take to go to council so they know when to come? Of course.
This can go to council next Friday.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Kocorian, we've had the staff report already. Comments from folks here from Studio City?
I'm just very pleased that we're finally moving forward on correcting this injustice, this error that was made, and based on the science and the data, it's an appropriate change, needs to be done immediately.
Yeah, I'm glad it was based on the science and data so that we can make the case and, you know, push it on through. Okay. We do not have a quorum, but we'll move it forward to council.
As a communication?
As a communication.
As a communication from the chair.
Yeah, but I'm sure that it will pass without issue. So, thank you. All right. Number two.
Madam Chair, items number two through seven, if you like, you consider somewhat jointly since they're all interrelated in terms of the 245 contracts.
Great.
That are before the council today as well.
Okay, and do we have a report on all of those?
Yes, we do. Our office in the CAO, and we'll have backup from the Department of Water and Power as well.
Okay. Don't come up all at once. Yeah, got it.
Rafael Prieto with the CLA's office. I'm joined and... Mr. Kocorian, I'm joined by Robert Roth with the CAO's office, as well as staff in the Department of Water and Power.
Okay, what? You don't have any women working over there? Okay. All right, so to start, you have... you reviewed the contracts and found any issues with them, and have you assessed the department's need for these contracts and whether or not there are sufficient funds to support each one of them?
Yes, we've reviewed all contracts as instructed to do so. I believe the last meeting on the 27th, we took a look at all six of them. We sat down with the staff, our office, CAO. We took a look at each of the contracts. We've assessed that there is an existing need for each of them with regard to their services in the upcoming years, and as well as we took a look at the funding and so forth, and there is sufficient funding to support each of these services. In addition to that, we know at the last meeting there were concerns expressed about the size of related projects associated with some of these contracts, particularly the Castaic project, the power plant project, as well as the Owens Dry Lake mitigation project. And our additional recommendations is to, well, first off, to go ahead and concur with the Board of Water and Power Commissioners in approving these contracts, but in addition to that, have the department report back quarterly to this committee with regard to the Castaic Modernization Project, since that project is about a $300 million project over the course of about three, four years. The contract that relates to that is a small piece. It's about $12 million. However, in order to take, you know, ensure that the contract funds are expended appropriately and the project is completed on time, we recommend those quarterly reports.
Now, item number four relates to a contract with Air Sciences, Inc. It's for air quality monitoring and regulatory compliance services for Owens Lake, the dust mitigation program, and the agreement was for, I believe, $8.4 million. And at the last meeting, I will raise some questions about the general status of the Owens Lake dust mitigation project because I was concerned that the... they were exceeding their budget. What's the current status and expenditure-wise, what's the status?
Good morning. Marty Adams, Director of Water Operations from LA DWP. Owens Lake has been in my division for about the last year and a half, and we've made some changes in direction during that time, and like to give you a... very pleased to give you an update, and actually I hope that you do continue to ask us questions because I think that we're at the point where the council and the city needs to pay close attention to this project as it moves ahead. As I know you're aware, this project has grown considerably from when it was first envisioned. We began as a $150 million dust mitigation program, and then that was Phase 1. We are now in the middle of Phase 7, and Phase 8 will be sent to us soon for dust control. And we have spent well over $500 million trying to control dust in the lake, and probably the worst part of that story to me beyond just those expenditures is that, to this day, almost all dust control has been with very water-intensive methods. That's the only thing that we've been permitted to do by State Lands Department of the three methods that have been outlined for us according to the state implementation plan. Currently, we're putting about 95,000 acre-feet of water on the lake. That's costing our ratepayers $45 million a year in replacement water from Metropolitan Water District, and we are desperately trying to turn the corner and get to a waterless dust control method. We had a test idea called Moot and Row that was on the books for the last couple of years. We were unsuccessful to actually obtain a permit from State Lands. They rejected that finally at their last meeting, and we are working now trying to come up with another waterless dust control method that would be acceptable to State Lands and still control dust. I intend to go to the Great Basin Air Pollution Control District meeting in May and, for the second time, seek some kind of relief from the agreements that have been made in the past so we can get some different dust control options on the table. We do have a master plan going on now. When the lake first started, we did not know the extent of this project, so we're trying to step back. We have a group of probably about a dozen different environmental groups, regulatory agencies, local government agencies involved to try to develop a lake-wide master plan, which hopefully will identify a good habitat area and habitat development, and at the same time identify areas of the lake that would not require water, and so we can get some dust control, get some water back off the lake. But we are... we are trying to change the game out there to recover some of the water that we've lost on the lake, and we are in a situation now where we do have to finish complying with the rest of the Phase 7 area by October 1st, and we are trying to find a way to do that that's acceptable both the Great Basin Air District and also to the state of California who owns the lake.
So how do the solar program and the dust mitigation piece fit together?
Now, the solar program was kind of a complementary piece to dust mitigation. The idea was that we could use solar panels to control dust in the lake. We have quite a bit of...
Are you pushing it back in or...?
Well, essentially what would happen is the deal on the lake is to block the wind so that the sand doesn't move, because when the sand moves, it tears up the crust of the lake, and then the fine particles are able to blow. And so the idea was to use the solar panels as windbreaks, essentially. We originally thought that we could do it with solar panels alone, but based on the criteria that was given to us by Great Basin, the panels would have to be so low to the ground and so flat that they would work very inefficiently just for solar control. So we looked at ideas to tilt the panels to a normally commercially recognized acceptable angle and use gravel or some other medium underneath them to help so between the two, between the panels and the gravel, that they would control the dust. There's been tremendous interest in that up in Owens Valley. We have, I would say, across-the-board support from everyone, from the environmental community to the regulatory agencies to drive this. We have just sent the application to the State Lands Commission, who has recommended that we pursue this for a test pilot, that we put 10 acres of solar on the lake in a couple of different places, using a couple of different methods, some with berms around the solar panels, others with some gravel under the solar panels. The challenge is that some of the soil in the lake is very poor, and so we're looking for what the appropriate areas would be. You probably could not afford to put solar anywhere on the lake because it would not be commercially viable. So we're trying to find an application where we could put solar on the lake that matches what we would spend somewhere else for solar, because in this case, we could get it permitted and allowed where so many places are not available, but by the time you get to the permit process, there's some roadblock with this desert conservation plan or something. Everyone wants to see solar on the lake. So, matter of fact, in one of the Phase 7 areas and the Phase 8 area coming up, there's about three square miles that would be enough for this. We have a planned 200-megawatt solar plant out there. If solar proves to work on the lake with a pilot, it could be ideal location where we would get dust control and solar energy all in the same spot. So we're hoping that that's an option, but something we are moving forward on.
What will you know whether that option is viable?
Um, I expect that within the next... State Lands only meets every other month. I expect the next three to four months, we should have a permit to proceed, and my understanding is that the power system's ready to proceed with this first test. And it'll take probably a year to go. It depends on the wind season, but if we get a pretty good wind season, we should have most of the data we need within a year, and then hopefully get a permit to move ahead.
Okay, so when does the State Lands meet?
Their next meeting is in June. The Great Basin and them both meet every other month in their alternating months, so their meeting would be in June. We don't have a date yet, but it's usually early.
So why don't you come back in July and give us an update?
I'd be pleased to.
All right, and also be prepared to come back and talk about the cost?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, for CAO, CLA, the CompuCom system contract at the last meeting, I also expressed some concern about the amount of the contract, $22 million over three years, and I wanted you to look at the justification for the amount and whether or not that amount was commensurate with other contracts on the market or under city's ITA.
Yeah. Yeah, we took a look at that contract as well, and apparently what they've done is they basically just consolidated all their software licensing agreements under this one contract. We sat down with their IT chief, actually, DWP's, and apparently it is commensurate. As a matter of fact, he's also spent... he's worked for ITA, and he's actually at the table here, and could validate that as well, too. Cliff, did you want it?
Cliffing, Assistant Director of IT over at LA DWP. Prior to that, I worked for ITA for 24 years and actually worked on the original CompuCom contract for the city. The contract that we have is comparable to the city. The city currently has a contract for about $100 million over five years with CompuCom for the similar type of software. Ours, when you look at the market percentages that we have, they're all comparable to what the city has in terms of pricing. We also have a clause within our contract that CompuCom has to provide us with the same level of pricing that they provide to the city so that we are comparable.
Okay. Mr. Kocorian, are there any questions? We put all these items together.
Yeah, it's slightly off-topic, but if we could go back for a moment to the dust mitigation and the use of... or the plans for solar there. Has any analysis been made of the potential loss of efficiency in the photovoltaic due to the presence of the dust and what impacts mitigation will have on increasing efficiency on PV, number one? And number two, as part of the solar plan for the area included an assessment of solar thermal and to the merits that it may have and potential impacts on efficiency of solar thermal versus PV?
In terms of the solar panels out there, one of the... that's one of the first questions we got was would it work in the dusty area? If this was the beginning of the lake project, when you could barely see through the air at good parts of the year, I would say that'd be a real problem. Right now, the dust is very well-controlled, except in the areas that are still outstanding. There are... the best anecdotal evidence we have at this point is that Great Basin has operated some solar panels on the lake for power supply for some of their equipment for up to 20 years. The first concern was that they would have bad corrosion problems because of the characteristics on the lake, and the panels have performed very well. And there's enough rain during the course of the wintertime, and then we also look at providing maybe additional washing, that we don't think there'd be any fouling necessary for the panels. And I don't think the lake at this point is really any dustier than most desert-type settings, which is where solar is being looked at, so I don't think it's a deal killer. In terms of solar thermal, the issues there become height and appearance on the lake and the aesthetics of the lake and how it looks, as well as, you know, any industrial-looking applications are very sensitive issues to State Lands Commission. And so at this point, we've been looking strictly at photovoltaic on the lake, although power system's also looking elsewhere in the Owens Valley at the southern end, where they might also incorporate some solar thermal. But we did have some interesting proposals of solar thermal inside greenhouses. It's a way to maybe control dust, and also it's a very lightweight application. It's kind of a different technology. It uses farming technology and lightweight manufacturing to maybe ease some of the soil loading condition, you know, the problems on the lake. We're not sure that the appearance of buildings on the lake would be acceptable to State Lands Commission. At this point, we kind of doubt it. So our focus at this point is photovoltaic, but depending on the other technologies, it may not be ruled out, because that would shrink the footprint that we'd need. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, Mr. CLA, your recommendation on all of these contracts?
My recommendation is to approve these contracts, these items also before we today in council, items 23 through, I think, 27, and additionally to have them report back quarterly on the Owens dust mitigation program, as well as the Castaic Modernization Project.
All right, that'll move forward as a communication. Thank you. Oh, wait, yeah, thank you to all of you, and then we have to call... Dr. Williams! Might as well have you stay up here. Dr. Williams, Williams, and Dr. Williams. Hmm, what does that mean? Does that mean Dr. Williams gets... Let's see. Okay, you can let him have two minutes. All right.
For which ones?
All of them.
All of them?
Yes.
Did they just do all of them?
Yes.
Hang on.
You were here, too. All right, you got two minutes.
Thank you.
Go at it.
245. Thank you very much for the 245. I do have some interest, especially in the Owens, because I've worked there, and I know a lot of the people there, and you'll eventually get a Bishop Airport addition for here. The Owens Valley, why do we use it? Because it's a cheap source of water. Now, we also have power lines there, so now it's going to be... oh, it's going to be our solar farm. We've abused Owens Valley for a long time. Putting solar panels on 30,000 acres of quotes "dusty" ground sounds... there seems to be some problem there because, number one, you'll have to put in roads in order to service the panels. You're going to have to put in lines in order to draw power from the panels. All of these things will cause problems for the Owens Valley. We've abused them long enough. Why can't we give them some of the water back in order to keep the dust down? By the way, panels don't do very well in dusty areas and where there's a high humidity, so they're going to be... have to be washed down, cleaned every once in a while. So Owens Valley is the primary one. So I would highly recommend that they go back and redo it, because why are... why is the Owens Valley an important issue? It has a settlement agreement. Why? Because it was eventually found that we, LA, has adversely affected the entire Owens Valley. Can't we give them some of the water back to allow it to go back to what it was 100 years ago? Thank you.
Thank you. Have you been up there lately?
Hmm?
Have you been up there lately?
Have I?
Have you been to Owens Valley lately?
Lately?
Yeah.
Oh, three months ago.
Did you see the river?
Hmm?
Did you see the river?
Yeah.
It looks good, doesn't it?
The Owens Valley looked goo... if you get some of the old historic photographs.
Yeah, did you see the river, though?
Yeah.
Looks nice.
And I've also done the groundwater for the northern end of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, okay, thank you. That's the end of that item, the end of the agenda, and now we will go to public comment. For surprise, Dr. Williams and Lisa Sarkin. Why don't we let Lisa go first, though? Let's try a little variety.
Lisa Sarkin, Studio City Neighborhood Council. I'd like you to... I don't know how to do this exactly, but I'd like to request that a motion. I don't know if it would come from our councilmen or whether it would come from this committee, something that finds out for us how we're being charged for our water rates, because we thought that the electric motion was actually for water. We never even realized that it was just electric, because we never could find the file for it. And so we'd like to know if there can be a report from the DWP or if there has to be a motion. However it is, I just want to request that. I don't know if it would become from Mr. Kocorian. Okay, and the other thing is that for more than three years, ratepayers have been given different information from the DWP in 91604 and 91602, and can there be a report from the DWP explaining why? Some of us were told we're in Zone 2, some of us were told we're in Zone 1. We could never find out how it was actually figured out, and the water rates is also the issue. We've never been able to find out what tier we're in. I think that's... it's really a mess.
So you want to look back retroactively?
Well, we'd like to just find out why... I think the committee should be able to find out why everybody's given a different answer. And even when you speak to the people who are supposed to be involved with the neighborhoods, and I have listed the names of the people on my paper that I gave in, that they gave us different answers than what Mr. Kocorian's office was finally able to find out just in the last month or whatever. So I think that's important, because we just... it's just the runaround, no matter how many people ask whatever questions, we almost always each get a different answer.
Do we work on this together? Do you want to add anything?
No, I'm...
Let's see if we can find out.
That would be fantastic. However, that has to happen. We'd really appreciate it.
And you know, just so you know, there's a lady named Barbara Blinderman who's been working with Pauline Knox on redoing the way the bill is formatted so that people can understand it.
I didn't even bring that up to here for the one minute. I was going to get to talk. That was my next question. I was going to come back to that.
I'll ask the... Mr. CLA, if you could get the department to come in at the next meeting and give us an update. I know they've had a lot of focus groups. I know that they've met with a lot of citizen groups around the city, and it's been a while now, and we got sidetracked with things.
Yes, we all understand that, you know.
So now that we're all on the right track now, let's have them come in and give us an update on that.
May 18th is your next scheduled?
Yeah, so we can find out what's going on.
Okay, so I'll come back on May. Okay. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Big surprise. Dr. Williams, yes?
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Cerrano.
Today.
Thank you. Strategic plan. Oh, how can an organization of multi-billion dollars a year operate without a strategic plan? Even the fire department has a strategic plan, and what... two main things in it. Trust and integrity. All of these things, all these issues for this morning, how can you deal with any of them if you don't know where this monster is going? One commissioner said, "How can I explain it to my people if I don't understand it?" The bill. Visibility, transparency. How can we know what the budget really means when we can't trust the budget, much like the stock market as of yesterday? If wrong numbers are put in or if other numbers are put in, how can we trust any of the numbers? And strategic plan has been going on by Huron for over two years with no approved strategic plan. Now they want to give Huron even more money to develop the strategic plan. Use the libraries, strategic... Use the library's strategic plan. Use the department's strategic plan. At least get a mission statement done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. All right, that marks the end of public comment.
Madam Chair, you have one more card.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Barry, Barry Johnson, sorry about that.
Barry Johnson, Studio City Residents Association. Just a little bit more on what Lisa was just saying on our water rates. We've been in the wrong tier, we're not sure if we still are, and for how long we were in the wrong tier. And again, we're asking for some refunds for having paid in a higher rate when we shouldn't have been, and it's just impossible to tell on your bill, you know, what's happening with your water. And the original motion that sought to correct this problem by former councilmember Gruel, we thought was going to be warranted to include both our water and our electricity, and for some reason, it came through only electricity. But water is the same issue for being in the wrong tier. Thank you.
Ms. Nancy, did you want to come up?
Good morning, Wendy Nancy, Water and Power. We can report back as requested, but I just, for the record, wanted to clarify that unlike the power system, the water system has three tiers, if you will, already, and Studio City is in the medium tier, if you will, for water. Water is based upon number in household, number in household, lot size, et cetera. And in the case of Studio City, they are in the medium temperature zone. You can go on the website and look on the first page when it comes up, and it'll tell you, according to your zip code, what your baseline, if you will, your 10-1 allocation of water would be. I don't know it offhand, but it is on the website, and you can go and look there.
Maybe what you can do is assist the CFA. I'm thinking, and I'll talk to Mr. Kocorian about this, once we've gathered all of our information, that we can do some kind of a mailing outreach into those two particular zip codes and give all this information to people in a very succinct and direct way.
Would be happy to.
Yeah, you can help him, so we can do that.
That will at least be an interim step before we can clarify the information that people get on their bills. I think that would be a very helpful first step.
As we move towards that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. All right, anyone else wishing to comment on items out on the agenda should do so at this time? Otherwise, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1626.47]